Tonight, but are listening or hooked up electronically. Just so we have some clarity on that. How many people can you tell, Mr. Curry, how many people are of the public are online or here listening electronically?
There are six participants, including the three commissioners.
Okay, well.
And that actually may be double counting. Mr. Light, are you connecting by telephone?
I am. But yeah, I think I've double counted.
There's two non-commissioned.
Okay, well, I'd just like everybody to understand, we do have people that are listening electronically, some of the members of the commission, as well as some members of the public, and others I guess may join later. So I'm going to ask everybody, if you do speak, please come up to the microphone and speak slowly and clearly so they can hear. Second, I'm going to ask that, we had a work session last week, which was similarly an electronic meeting. And we had some people who just piped up without really being called on by the chair being recognized. So I would ask everybody to cooperate, and those people who are here electronically, if you'd like to say something, commissioners included, just has to be recognized and not just start talking, because for one thing, it's rude, and for another thing, it's very difficult for people to know who to speak. So with those things in mind, I'd like the administrative, I guess, to call the roll.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Fraser?
Here.
Mr. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kohler?
Here.
Ms. Ishi?
Here.
Mr. Shulun?
Here.
Mr. Conne?
Here.
All right, thank you. Let the minutes reflect that we do have a quorum physically present, mainly myself, Mr. Henry, Mr. Shulun, and Mr. Fraser. The Code of Virginia requires that at least four members of the commission be present physically in order to have a meeting. The electronic part, as far as the public goes, is for their convenience only. It's not required, but we're doing it because of the unusual situation that we've got. And as far as the commissioners who are here electronically, namely Mr. Light and Mr. Kohler and Ms. Ishi, they're participating pursuant, or they're, well, let me see, they're participating pursuant to a provision of the state code that allows them to participate electronically under two circumstances. One is if there is a medical condition that they've got that prohibits them from attending the meeting, or prevents them from attending the meeting, or for personal, because of a personal matter. And the three of them have requested the chair to allow them to participate in that fashion, because of a first reason. I have to say that there are some legal issues about their request that we discussed at the last meeting. Mr. Curry is our Freedom of Information Act officer, and he indicated that members of the commission can participate in the meeting on the grounds that they have a medical condition that arises from the COVID situation, even if they don't have it. If they're concerned about it or concerned about being present at a meeting like this, that that constitutes a medical condition that allows them to participate electronically, as opposed to just doing it as a personal matter. So everyone should understand that the reason for all these technicalities is the Freedom of Information Act requires that all meetings of any public body, including this one, have to be public. They have to be noticed properly and have to be open to the public unless there's an exemption or exception provided for in the Freedom of Information Act, including people that participate electronically. Electronic meetings are not allowed, except under very limited and special circumstances. And the code's very specific about when members of the public body can participate electronically in the meeting. So that's why we're making sure that all the i's are crossed and the a's are dotted. In furtherance of this issue, I contacted the executive director of the Freedom of Information Advisory Council in Richmond, Mr. Gerhardt, and asked him a couple of questions relative to what the requests that I received for the three commissioners who aren't here to participate electronically. And he was very kind, got my own and answered me this afternoon, and advised that the member who claims a medical condition, the code doesn't require that they specify what it is. If it's a personal matter, that could be a family matter, it could be a vacation, it could be a variety of things, if it's a personal matter, they do have to specify exactly what it is, and that has to be recorded in the minutes. So the commissioners who have asked to participate on the grounds of a medical condition have stated they don't have a condition. They're just concerned they might get it. And I asked Mr. Gerhardt that, the question, and he said, "Well, if they didn't tell you what the medical condition is, you can't ask them because of HIPAA and other federal regulations, maybe the ADA." But you can't ask them what the condition is. And I said, "Well, I didn't ask them what the condition was. They volunteered it, and they volunteered that they actually don't have it. They're just concerned they might be exposed to it." So I asked him, "Well, in that circumstance, does it qualify or not?" And he said, "That's up to the commission. It's a debatable issue because the Freedom of Information Act says that all the exceptions are to be narrowly construed, as opposed to otherwise." So that's a question that's up to the members of the commission. And with that said, I just want to address this to the three commissioners who aren't here, and ask them one more time if they want to switch their reason for participating to a personal matter as opposed to medical condition. So I'm just going to go down the line. Mr. Light, you want to change, or you want to stay with what you got?
No, sir. I'll stay with what I've got.
Okay, Ms. Ishi?
Yes, I would like to stay with what I have. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kohler?
Sorry, I have a meeting.
Mr. Kohler?
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, somehow I became muted. I will stay with my, I stay.
Okay. All right, I just want to say one more thing, and that is, Mr. Gerhardt reminded me that there's, I knew there was one, and now there are two attorney general opinions that say that if there's any kind of noncompliance with FOIA, the meeting is invalid, and any votes or decisions that are taken at the meeting are likewise invalid. So any recommendations we would make, or any, basically anything we did at the meeting would be invalidated if we don't follow all these steps. And I apologize to those of you who I can see out there saying, "Why is he doing all this?" That's the reason why. So, all that being said, we have a request, and does somebody want to make a motion one way or the other about whether to accept or approve the three requests from Mr. Light, Ms. Ishi, and Mr. Kohler to participate electronically?
Mr. Chairman.
With Mr. Henry. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I think he's gone through a very detailed format, state law, FOIA. We've heard from the three commissioners who are not here, who stated under the medical condition exemption that they don't have a medical condition. So we have a quorum present here tonight. We have, the applicants have traveled here and waited months to have their cases here tonight and proceed. And we have a full agenda, not only of what we have here, but other things that we need to work on in the months to come. So I think legally that we have to go with the decision of a quorum of the people present to participate in the meeting and to vote on the matters on the agenda tonight.
So are you saying that the other members?
The other three members are not present, are not part of the meeting.
So, but are you saying that, are you making a motion, in other words, that their, that their request to participate electronically not be accepted or be denied? All right, so that's the motion. Does anybody else want to second it?
Just by simply changing their reason to personal, they'd be included?
Correct.
And it would be against, that would go against one, the two times per year?
Right. That, I think, is a significance, that there's a limit, there's no limitation if you participate electronically because of a medical condition. But if you, a request to participate electronically because of a personal matter, you can only avail yourself of that opportunity two times per calendar year. So that's the distinction. So at this point, you know, we really didn't go through all this in great detail in our work session, so I don't know if that would count or not, but it was the same reasoning,
Mr. Chair, can I be recognized, please?
Well, actually, no, because you can't, you're not putting, you haven't, your request to participate electronically hasn't been approved yet.
So let me just make clear that you are voting on something relative to this, our presence, that you will not accept any comment from us on that matter? I just want to make that clear.
I don't think that I can.
I don't think you're right on that. There's nothing in our current resolution that says anything on this topic, so we are not barred under our current resolution for participating.
Well, I mean.
As you showed us, it says, it says, the FOIA thing that you sent us from the FOIA officer, this really has to remember the public body decide what does and does not qualify as a disability or medical condition that prevents attendance in any given case. And the Virginia Code provision requires us only to have a resolution recognizing that we can have electronic meetings. So there's nothing in our current resolution that bars us from speaking on this. And if there is, could be pointed out, please?
Okay. Well, I think that I've already, I've already done that.
What provision in our resolution, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I just, I wasn't unclear, I wasn't clear, I wasn't. The specific language in our resolution that states.
I think that it's subsection D of our, of our resolution, it's not really a resolution, it's a, it's a written policy that we adopted at our May meeting, and then we re-adopted it last week by unanimous vote in my end. And that says in subsection D, I don't have it right in front of me right now, but subsection D says, can you pull that up on the screen? Is there anybody, or Mr. Curry, or Shell, anyway? Subsection D says that if, if there is a challenge, that the commission votes on it. And by that.
Yes, but we're just going to say that we can't participate in that discussion on that.
Well, because you have requested to participate electronically. And so your request is being determined, if your request, or let's put it this way, until such point in time as your request is approved, then you can't participate.
Until such time as our request is disapproved. I think you're, I'd like to.
Well, until it's approved or disapproved, you're not approved to be, it says it shall be if it's in compliance with FOIA. That's the issue that the commission has to debate, and you're not here to debate it, so I guess the four of us are going to have to debate it.
Is it true that we debate, you participated fully in last week's meeting, without this big problem?
I think that's correct, because no one challenged your, there wasn't any similar motion made, so your request was approved.
Well, I don't, I think that without having, having approved it or disapproved it, that would assume that we have the ability to participate unless the commission disapproves it.
Well, that's what we're going to have a debate on right now, or we're going to, I don't know, we don't have a second yet. We have a motion, and we don't have a second.
A second is.
All right, Mr. Fraser has seconded. And the motion is to disapprove the electronic participation of the three commissioners who are not present. Is there any further discussion?
There, may I participate again, even though you say I can't? I would say that.
Are you going to wait for me to answer, or you're just going to go ahead and talk?
Well, it depends. May I, go ahead and speak? Thank you, I'll take that as a yes. So I will just clarify that, again, we don't have to provide a reason. We have done so because you asked me.
All right, wait a minute, wait a minute, look.
What the reason was.
I didn't ask.
In email at your request.
Just a minute, just a minute, Ms. Ishi. I didn't ask anybody what the reason was. I asked each one of you, when you made your request, to specify which subsection you, each of you were relying on. That's all. I just asked you to specify. And you and Mr. Light and Mr. Kohler had already done so. You all three have said, and that's why I asked for the clarification, whether you were doing it on the basis of a personal matter, or you were doing it on the basis of a medical condition that prevents you from being physically present. And you all answered about how concerned you are about being exposed possibly. You mentioned the governor's executive orders, you mentioned the state health commissioner, and so forth and so on. Not one of you said, "I have a medical condition." Now, it's true, we're not allowed to ask what your medical condition is or isn't, but you volunteered it, and you all.
There, read it from the email you sent to me.
Wait a minute, stop interrupting me, please. You all three specifically said that you don't have it. You volunteered that information. And that being the case, Mr. Gerhardt's advice to me over the phone was, I told him what the situation was. And you're right, we can't ask you, and you don't have to specify whether you've got a broken leg or any other medical condition that prevents you from being at the meeting. But you already told us what it was, and it's, it's not a medical condition that you have. It's a medical condition that you're afraid of getting, and that's not a medical condition, or at least he said that's a debatable issue. And since the Freedom of Information Act says all the exceptions have to be narrowly construed, his recommendation was put it up to the commission vote. So that's where we are.
Well, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kohler, go ahead.
Well, in other words, being in a high-risk group, one is identified as a high-risk group, is my first question, is not adequate, in your opinion, not adequate to participate?
Well, the short answer, Mr. Kohler, is simply what the statute says. I'm going to read it one more time. "Subject to the requirements of subsection C, public bodies may conduct any meeting wherein the public business is discussed or transacted through electronic means if, on or before the day of a meeting, a member of the public body holding the meeting notifies the chair of the public body that a such member is unable to attend the meeting due to a temporary or permanent disability or other medical condition that prevents the member's physical attendance." Close quotes. That's section 2.2, 370, 8.2a1b of the Code of Virginia. And you, you and the rest, what you just asked me, the answer is no, because you're not unable, you just don't want to. And that's a distinction, I think.
No, no, I don't believe that, I don't believe, I don't know what everybody else said, but there was nothing in my statement that said that I did not have, that I recall, did not have COVID-19. It stated that I had a medical condition that was, that may, would make me particularly subject to it.
Right, but that's on a medical condition. That's your age. I could say that too.
My age, it's not just my age. I have, I mean, I've had bronchitis, I've had other things that have, that make me susceptible.
Well.
May I be recognized, Mr. Chair? I feel we're going exactly where we're not supposed to be going, requiring Mr. Kohler and others to justify their medical condition. And I will say that's not appropriate under the statute. You also have, if I may read from your email.
Just a minute, just a minute, Ms. Ishi. I didn't say that, he said it. He just read his own email, what he said. I didn't ask him what his condition was.
He didn't read his own email, he was responding.
They deviate from power, they just take any personal.
Yeah, that's what I want to know, if, you know, rather than continue this, which has been going on here for 20 minutes, why don't you all just switch to a personal matter?
There is no need to switch to a personal matter. First of all, you did ask me in an email, you said, "I am assuming you are not, you are not, you have not been diagnosed with or otherwise afflicted with COVID-19 at present, do not actually have a condition that prevents your physical attendance, but are likely to so add an abundance of caution and to avoid risk of getting infected." Correct? That's what you asked me.
That's a high issue then, if you're women.
I will dispute you that, in fact, you did ask me about any medical condition now.
No.
And I have no idea whether I'm afflicted with COVID-19, because you can be asymptomatic. So the fact that I may not be personally having symptoms now would not mean that I don't have a medical condition. And it does, and Mr. Curry has also advised, our FOIA officer, that this is appropriate as a medical, as a medical exception under that provision of the Virginia Code. So I'm curious as to why this is even coming up.
Because Mr. Gerhardt, that's what he told me, that's what he told me to do. He said, because if someone's challenged it, and someone has challenged it, and it's been seconded by two members of the commission, it's challenged. And the procedures that we adopted, that you voted for, say it was challenged, the commission decides it by majority vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Henry.
We can go on and debate this for another 35 minutes, another hour, 35 minutes, all night. There's apparently two people that do not like the position they're in. We have a quorum here, this is business of the planning commission, business of the county, business of citizens here. Can we please take a vote and move on? And if this issue can be addressed further in days to come, regardless of work sessions and to meetings next month?
Okay, I'm going to take that as a call for the question.
Well, I'd like to give them one last opportunity to make it a personal, take a personal exemption, or whatever you want to call it.
In other words, under. 2.2, 370, 8.2b, the member is unable to attend due to a personal matter, and identifies with specificity the nature of the personal matter.
Yes.
All right, I'm going to ask you all again. Do you want, does any of, any of the three of you want to change your reason to 2.2, 370, 8.2a1b? Mr. Light?
To me, the medical condition is the spreading of a novel coronavirus that has led to the declaration of an emergency in the unusual circumstances that we're in. This is not a personal matter. No, I do not want to change my position.
Okay, Mr. Kohler?
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Ishi?
As Mr. Light has said, not only is it a medical condition that the governor of Virginia and health.
Look, I don't want to hear another speech, if you please. Are you going to change it or not? Yes or no?
Is there no discussion being allowed?
You've already, we've already discussed it. We're giving you one last chance to change your reason for requesting electronic participation. Do you want to take it or not? Yes or no?
I don't believe we've fully discussed this.
Well, somebody's called the question, I'm the chairman, so I'm calling it. We're going to vote on it in about 30 seconds. So do you want to change your reason while you've got time or not?
I say that all members of the public, including commissioners, should follow the recommendations of the governor and health officials, if those are appropriate to their situation, medical situation. But now I will not vote.
All right, I'm going to break this into three votes, one for each one, because I do think that, that Mr. Kohler has a somewhat different circumstance. So let's vote on Mr. Light and Ms. Ishi.
What's the vote? I mean, yes is what?
The motion is to disallow their participation, to disapprove their request to participate. So if you vote aye, it means they cannot participate. If you vote nay, it means they can. Well, then we're going to have to have a motion, I guess, to approve their, we'll have the opposite motion. So the first motion that's on the table is to disapprove their request for electronic participation. So this only applies in this round from Mr. Light and Ms. Ishi. Everybody understand the motion that's made and seconded? All right, Mr. Henry, how do you vote? Mr. Fraser? Mr. Shulun?
Aye.
And I vote aye. All right, now, Mr. Kohler, the situation, who says that he has bronchitis and other issues, and so I think that's a little bit different situation for him. So it's the same motion, Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Mr. Shulun?
No.
I vote no. So the motion doesn't care. Mr. FOIA officer, now what? We've got a tie vote.
It's a tie vote, it's like it never happens. But another motion isn't, is.
All right, does somebody want to, well, all right, let's go through that motion. Does somebody want to make the motion now that Mr. Kohler's request to be approved to participate electronically be approved?
I would move, I would like the commission that Mr. Kohler's participation be allowed electronically.
Does anybody want to second it? Well, all seconded. All right, let's vote. Now, this is to approve this, so it's the opposite way.
Nay.
Mr. Henry votes nay, Mr. Fraser?
Nay.
Ms. Shulun?
I'm aye.
And I vote aye. So it's a tie vote. It hasn't been approved, and it hasn't been.
Not a parliamentarian.
What?
It's an amnestic parliamentarian.
He's appointing a parliamentarian. He can appoint me for a parliamentarian. Decision of the parliamentarian is final. If I will, he didn't say he had bronchitis. He said he's had it. I'm in the same situation. I've had it almost every year for the last 10 years. Do you have the procedure that members of the commission made about can't pull it up on the, can't pull it up to the board docs in the trees?
Never placed it in a board doc. Never made it to board doc.
Not how it's meant. It's on a may agenda.
It's been added, but I guess it's the chairman's role.
I just wanna make sure we have the exact one.
We have, but it's not amended.
What?
This burden is not amended to include the electronic participation.
All right, what's the pleasure of the commission? Well, I mean, I mean, everybody.
You know, you know, there's not so much about the, the, the condition of the vote or any of the commissioners are absent. We're not calling in to question their, their judgments or decisions, one or two. But it really comes down that the decisions we make tonight, there's no grounds here for challenging.
Exactly.
And that's, that's why we wanna make decisions tonight that we make, that cannot be challenged for any mistake in the interpretation of, of, for your situation and the state mandates. So this is, it's a question of our decision tonight that, that's staying.
Well, I think you're exactly right, Mr. Henry. The ruling of the chair is gonna be that the request has to be approved. And the request has been made, it's been challenged, it's been put up to a vote, and both votes resulted in a tie vote, two to two, as far as Mr. Kohler is concerned. So it hasn't been approved. So if it's not approved, it's denied. So that's gonna be the ruling of the chair. All right, our next order of business is the adoption of the agenda.
Are there any amendments or additions to the agenda?
Oh, there is one change, I think, that the, the application for a text amendment by Mr. Chapman has been withdrawn. Is that right, Ms. Summers?
That is correct, sir.
All right.
So further additions or deletions, I read that the adopt the agenda is presented with this one application being withdrawn. That would be GO business number one. GO number one.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, the agenda's adopted. All right, the first order of business is the adoption of two minutes, I believe. And we have quite a backlog. We have not been able to have any regular meetings until this, this one. And a couple of those were, those early meetings were continued until this evening, so, or continued when they, when they came up because of other matters. So anyway, Miss Ishi and Mr. Light and, and I reviewed, I think, in detail and submitted our changes. And I think you all have seen copies of what, of how they've been amended. Mostly it was either editorial or typographical errors, so. Could I have a motion about January 10 work session minutes?
Could, could we just adopt them all in one motion?
We, we could.
Well, I, I would move, I think the, the few typos that I was able to catch were caught by others, so I, I don't have anything to add. So I would move that we adopt all seven of these packets of minutes unless somebody has a.
As the minister corrected by the.
As the minister corrected, it's the last that we saw.
Okay. All right, is there a second?
I second that.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed, say no. All right, the motion is carried. All seven sets of minutes are approved as amended or corrected. All right, the next order of business is public comment. We're not having any public hearings tonight. I don't know what the pleasure of the commission is gonna be about some of these applications. But I'm just gonna tell you all, and those who are listening in, that if you have a general public comment about what a wonderful job the commission's doing, or anything else you'd like to say, feel free to do so now. I'll ask you to stand up if you're from Rappahannock, state your name and magisterial district, and try to limit your comments to a reasonable amount of time. If anybody who is here, wants, is here to comment on one of the specific applications, I'm gonna allow comment on those as we go through them. Rather, because I'm, I'm, it's gonna be my preference that we don't have a separate public hearing on it anymore, and just cast them on a basis of what materials are before us. Whether the commission's gonna adopt that or not, I don't know, but. So if you're here to talk about one of those applications, just hold your comments, and I'll give you a chance to talk later. So does anybody wish to make a public comment about one of the applications or some general matter? All right, does anybody who's listening electronically wish to be recognized? All right, hearing none, the public comment period is closed. All right. Now, the next order of business is preliminary review of the Amosville Fire Volunteer Fire and Rescue Squad Company illuminated sign. And this is a matter with respect to which I have a conflict of interest that I have previously disclosed facility to the Virginia State and local government Conflict of Interest Act, because I am counsel to the fire department and rescue squad. Even though that's still on a pro, on a basis, I think I'm still counsel, and so I'm prohibited from participating in it. Now, I had made an arrangement with, not really foreseeing this particular circumstance that's arisen tonight, with Mr. Light, who's the vice chair, to handle this part of the meeting. But since he's not here and can't participate electronically, somebody else is gonna have to act as chairman. And I would ask Mr. Henry if he'd be willing to do it, just for this part of the meeting.
Uh, sure.
Okay, well, with that, I'm gonna reduce myself and separate from the table and turn it over to Mr. Henry. Thank you.
So we have the, the preliminary review here for the special exception 200301 for the Amosville Volunteer Fire Department for the light sign, lighted sign that everyone knows, if they've seen it. And I guess this is determined if it's, if the application ready for a public hearing is current? Uh, yes, as with any special exception, the planning commission can choose to hold a public hearing, or you can refer it on to the side and body, which in this case is the board supervisor.
Okay.
With the recommendation of the board supervisor. So we have the application here. I'm assuming that the members present have had an opportunity to, to, to review it and, and look at it. It seems to be in detail. And there's photographs of the sign, specifications on the sign, staff report. So discussion by the commission members. Mr. Fraser?
Thank you, Mr. Henry. I'm aware of the sign. I have a little bit of knowledge of it, how it wound up being there. And it's basically a replacement sign for a properly permitted internally illuminated sign that was there, that was falling apart, and was really unable to be maintained. It was just not cost-effective, I believe, to try and repair the thing. It was literally falling apart. So I, I, I have no problem with us making the recommendation to board supervisors that the special exception be approved. Really just replacing what was there. It's a little bit better sign, of course. It's still a technology, but it's still just an illuminated sign.
Mr. Shulman?
I agree with Mr. Fraser. My only problem is I don't like the blue. And I see it in my rearview mirror. It makes me think there's a cop behind me.
I've said your life, you make it tougher. I, I think the application is in detail and explanatory, and I think it offers the board supervisors plenty of information here to, to make a decision. And I go along and concur with Mr. Fraser that we, we, to pass it on to the board supervisors with a recommendation and approval. So, Mr. Fraser, is that a motion?
Uh, yes, sir, it is. I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we'll push it on to the board supervisors.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Well done. Try to be as efficient. All right, uh, the next matter to come into the commission tonight is preliminary review of special exception permit number 20-03-02 Risk and Strategic Management Corp. With a proposal to amend their existing special exception permit number 18-05-04. Do you wanna summarize that, Ms. Summers, and give your report and recommendation on?
Sir, Mr. Light has requested a special exception permit which would replace his original permit, special exception 180504, to allow for additional training days. This property is owned agricultural, 84 acres in size, and is located off of Shurrie Lane in Amosville. The applicant owner currently provides training for life safety situations and all training is conducted outdoors. And he has requested to amend several of the original conditions of that permit. The first proposed change would be to current condition number two and number four. And the proposed change would read a maximum of 10 training events per month. The second proposed change would be to the current condition number five, allowing for three mini buses instead of the allowed two mini buses on the property. The remaining conditions of that permit, 180504, would remain. V. Committed that if entrance continues to operate as low-volume commercial entrance, less than 50 average daily trips, or 59, then V. has no concerns that the site generated traffic will exceed 50. The entrance needs to be improved to meet commercial entrance dangers, including verification and intersection site distance. V. recommended making that a part of the permit as a condition. The health department commented that the property is wrong with no developed water sewer or sewage disposal system. The owners provide portageons for their staff and their students, and that the portageons are serviced regularly by a company that is currently licensed in the state of Virginia as a sewage chamber. Other, they understand that bottled water and food are packaged in and packaged out of property by the participants. The health department recommends a means of hand sanitation be provided for those using the portageons. They also recommend that if drinking water other than commercially available bottled water is provided to the participants, if he sorts for an approved public water supply using a food-grade water hose and a suitable container that are washed, rinsed, and sanitized prior to use. If the owner should pursue on-site well or sewage disposal systems, they would need to obtain required permits through the Department of Health. But they do not have an objection to the proposal to the increase of the frequency of the training.
By that, you mean the health department?
Yes.
All right. What's the pleasure of the commission? I think the applicant is here. It's hard to recognize people right. Is that, I mean, I think this is pretty self-explanatory. We've already had a similar amendment a few months ago, in January, so probably through the commission. So what's the pleasure of the commission? Somebody wanna make a motion, or do you have questions for the applicant or for Ms. Summers? Mr. Henry?
I'll defer from all.
Mr. Fraser? Do you have any questions or for Mr.?
Okay, I'm just wondering, how does this application differ greatly or in a significant way from what was presented a couple months ago?
So, we've.
Just for the record, can you say who you are and all the cases?
No, thank you. My wife, I'm here in Barra, along with my wife, and we are the children of the property. The, the application we put forward back in January was for 20 days per month, with basically working days and standing holidays when we would be doing the training. And we've diminished that down to 10. And that's a reflection to the whole bank grid coming out, where they specify the exact number of days they wanted, and also the exact number of participants, which range from 12 to 24, which is well within our, our allowed limits, for 30. So we now know exactly what we're after. We've submitted the bid. It's cycled through every five years. So withstanding your, your permission to, I must have this application, we get to service our requirements. I have some other information that may be useful, if I may have a minute.
Well, let's see what, if there's any other questions. Mr. Shulman, do you have any questions?
Not this time.
Okay. All right, does somebody wanna make, uh, wanna hear further?
Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Summers, can you give us a little synopsis of the history of this application, please? Since this has been off the table for months for a while, and also the public, too. Some members of the public here that just said that we have a little history here, please?
Sure. Back in 2018, the permit holder was granted the permit for this, for that company that is currently going. They came back in late 2019 and wanted to revise their current special exception permit. I'll note that the first permit was good for five years, so they came back within that timeframe and wanted to amend it to allow amendments to the conditions that they had. The planning commission heard it, heard that application. It then moved on to the board of supervisors, and at which, at the board of supervisors' public hearing, the applicant then withdrew his application. Within a month or two, I would say, then he reapplied the current application that you have before you tonight.
So this is the first time you've really, you've seen this application?
Yeah. So I have a question. Could you just restate for those present in the room, some members of the commission, like Mr. Shulman and Mr. Fraser? To be aware, what, what were the terms and conditions of the original 2018 special exception permit? Basically, how many days a week?
They were limited to three training days per month, no more than one training day per week, a maximum of 30 trainees at the property.
Or cumulative, or on any given day?
A maximum of 30 trainees shall be present for any training event.
Okay.
The training event shall be limited to a maximum of two days per month between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Arrivals and departures of trainees shall be restricted to two mini buses. A licensed medic and/or ambulance shall be employed for each event with potential for risk of injury. Trainees shall be restricted to professionals and leaders deemed competent by Risk and Strategic Management. All live ammunition shall not be used as part of. All live ammunition shall not be used as part of any training event. All areas, including parking, shall be a minimum of 100 feet from all property lines. Those training areas with noise effects should be located a minimum of 500 feet from all property lines. Would you like me to continue?
No, I think that's good enough. Those are the key ones. And so, there's only two, right, that they're proposing to change, right?
Correct.
The number of days per month, right?
What would be conditions?
Number, number two.
Number two?
Right.
And number four?
So, instead of three training events per month, it's going to go up to 10.
Correct.
And number four?
So, there would be no restriction on the amount of days in a week, but it would cap off at the entire month?
As 10.
Correct.
You could do 10 in a row.
Correct.
Okay.
Except for it's limited Monday through Friday.
Correct. Monday through Friday.
Okay.
So, two consecutive weeks.
All right. Any further questions of either the applicant or Ms. Summers? All right. Is there anybody here present that wishes to speak on this? Well, I know you. Everybody here, I know Mr. and Mrs. Joyce are here, and they submitted a letter. Has everyone seen it? Yes. All right.
I'd also like to add to that, because I didn't know that we were going to be allowed to speak as a public speaker.
Okay. All right, do you have anything you want to add to what's in your letter? I mean, everybody's read your letter.
Yes, I do.
Okay. Mrs. Joyce, I recognize you. Just come up and give it in the background.
My name is Joyce Johnson from the Jackson District. My husband and I, Tim, live right next door to our own property. The end of our house is only 570 feet from the majority of the training area, and goes on at our own. The Addams Family, that is here supporting them. I do understand that they do business with them, but as for noise levels at their house, they only have 103 feet of adjoining property lines, and their houses are half a mile down the road. Of course, they're not going to hear the kind of volume that we hear at 600 feet away. Our team shoots a half charge, light shots that are in this application when they know they're being monitored. Like after last February of 2019, we made complaints, and for a couple months, they shot those softer rounds so that we couldn't hear, and then they started getting louder and louder. In December of 2019, they had some of the PC members out there for show and tell, the tour of the property. They also did a sound survey, which they used the low decibel half charge shot light charges. Within two weeks, Mike White began shooting the loud shots. On December 26, we were drawn from our house with loud shots less than two weeks after the PC toured and after their sound study was done. And they, my husband found Mike White trespassing on a property, doing sound tests with someone else's property. They're doing this within two weeks of showing you guys that they're doing something quieter. We don't hear the half charge, but that's not what he's shooting, and that's why we've continued to request denial of this all the time. He, our team can shoot any blank round that they want except for a cannon. There was no noise volume condition put in their permit when it was granted in 2018, even though it is suggested by the county code 1750 number six that sound volume should be, you know, in the, condition of the neighbors. I don't remember the exact term, because I wasn't supposed to be here, but it was a suggestion in the county code to put a condition in there. It was missed because Mike White put in what he wanted to believe that he's shooting, but he's not shooting that, and we get a test for that, because we have a loud home six inches from it, and I can hear a coffee pipe. I can't hear a kitchen when I'm in the living room. And so, I just want the county to realize that he has a type of blank shot in there, but that's not what he's shooting. And he's shot different things much, much louder within two weeks of showing you what he shot, and within two weeks of what his survey was. So, we are requesting that you please deny his application. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Brian Adams with the Jackson District. I think it's very funny that these people come up here to y'all and tell you the things that they're complaining about, and they...
Wait a minute. I don't want you to comment on what they, what, they're not, I don't want to make personal comments like that. If you have something to say about the application, the merits of the application or not, let's stick to that, okay?
Okay. I think what Mike's doing is totally fine. Nobody hears or complains anything besides the people he's talking for. What he's done and what he's planning to do, I think, is great for the community, and you know, I think things have been exaggerated on the complaints, and, you know, if you had a map you could show the pinpoint exactly where people live and how, you know, what people do up there and what he does, it's pretty much the same thing. They do it on the weekends, Mike does it during the week. So, you honestly, where it's a big deal, what Mike's trying to do, or what we cannot do personally, we should carry on up there. You know, we have to find, this man, he comes up here, does it, now it's a big deal. That's all I have to say about it.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Hi. My name's Bill Strain, Flint Hill. I'm a Skywork Cafe. I've been doing catering for Mike's company since its inception, and he's gone with us exclusively the whole time. He's committed to going forward with us, and it's been a big boom to my company as far as I've been able to hire one employee full-time, and if he's granting more days, I'll be able to hire two more employees full-time. And the tax revenue that's generated from increased business that I pay to the county quarterly will also increase. And I've been out there, I deliver personally in the morning, the lunches, the breakfast, the drinks, and I come back at 5:00, pick it up. I've heard some of the explosions and the shots. I don't even know what's going on, I'm not expecting anything, and I'm right there. I'm not bothered by a good angry jump, not that loud. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Somebody in the background?
Been on the Wicksville District. Just outsider's point of view. Friends down Surge and Lane have been there a whole lot. People shoot on the weekends out there, people down the road, people love the road. What Mike does, there's no difference in shooting out there, shooting where he is, it's the same. The gun's a gun, loud, this, that. Again, my wife runs, settles service station. Mike has us do several things, water supplies, things of that nature for clients that come in. We really appreciate Mike's business, and he's a class app. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else is here over here? Okay. Is there anybody that's been doing electronic?
There was a hand that was raised earlier, but it's gone now. I want to give him a minute.
You mean an electronic hand?
Correct.
I see. All right. What's the pleasure of the commission, though? Do you want to, does somebody want to make a motion? First, the first question is, do you want to, just a second. I didn't forget about it. Do we, is anybody, I mean, if we're going to have a public hearing, we're going to have a formal public hearing, an advertised public hearing, then somebody should make a motion to send this on for that purpose. Otherwise, if we're going to go direct for a recommendation, somebody make a motion to that effect, and then we're going to let the applicant speak to it, whatever the motion you have. Well, if the motion is to make the recommendation, we're going to have a formal public hearing, I just assume, defer until then, because we have a lot of other things.
May I ask a question? So, don't be too short. If you don't hear all facts and then make a motion or make a decision, would that, would you not need the facts first before you can make an appeal?
Well, I don't know. If we're going to have a public hearing, we're not going to make any decision tonight except to have a public hearing, a formal public hearing, I assume, next month. So, but if we're going to make the recommendation tonight based on what we've heard, and we give you an opportunity, or in addition to whatever, if you want to respond to whatever's been said and so forth. So, what's the pleasure of the commission? Do we have a...
The board supervisors have the option, too, for a public hearing?
Right. We, as the planning commission, are not required to have a public hearing. We can if we want to, and, but the board of supervisors that has the approval authority, they must have a public hearing on this. So, there's going to be a public hearing before the board of supervisors, one way or the other. And, you know, me personally, I think that based on what's in the application, which is very detailed, and plus, there's an existing permit. We've already had more or less a public hearing, I think, in January, and on a similar amendment, not quite as, I mean, the only difference is the number of days and the hours and so forth, the rest is pretty much the same. So, I think, my own view is, I would be in favor of just going straight to a recommendation tonight and passing it on to the board of supervisors. Somebody make a motion, one way or the other.
A recommendation of what?
Well, I didn't say that. I just said, we ought, we don't, I don't, I'm not in favor of having yet another public hearing. I'm in favor of making a recommendation to the board to approve it or disapprove it tonight. But if any, I mean, it's up to the board, or up to the commission, obviously. I would like to hear if Mr. Henry has anything specific to say, but I'm going to quantify, because the Jackson District Planning Commissioner is not in the meeting, so I would not really, I don't know that the planning commission should make a recommendation except maybe to pass on for a public hearing by the board of supervisors, but no recommendation. Well, that's a, that's a third option. That, that way, you basically cut to the chase, it goes to the board of supervisors, and it can be dealt with next month.
Well, my thought process, Mr. Chairman, is that the applicants came to the board in the very beginning with another property, Crest Hill Road, and that was very inappropriate for the use of, and the neighbors were very concerned with a small, more defined property. And we turned that request down, and we invited him to find another property and come back to us. And he found this property, and he came back to us, and we reviewed what he wanted to do with the property. We gave him a five-year permit. Subsequently, very soon into that five-year period, we now have this application, which is a very substantial change from the first one. Look at primary things being the number of events per month. Go from three to 10, and they can all be contiguous, but contiguous days, and five days one week, five days next week. I think that's a pretty large impact, and I would much rather to see the five years be used up and to see if, by his operations and working with the neighbors, that he could produce a more favorable neighborhood for his operation. Of course, he's got, I've heard people speak here tonight favorable, but I think probably they've at least received maybe some benefit from him being there. So, I'm inclined to see this existing permit play out for five years and to see what happens. You know, it's a private road, there are other people back there, and I know there's people like the Joneses back there who are not happy with it, and they have property, and they have property values, and they have the enjoyment of their properties, and so does the applicant. And I think it's a balance here, and this balance, if we grant this application, recommend approval, that balance is, will be outlined. So, if we was to send it on, my recommendation would be to deny and to let the current permit carry on for the balance of five years.
Is that a motion, Mr. Henry?
If you want a motion, you can do that motion.
All right, is there a second to the motion? I'll second that motion. All right. Before we have any further discussion, I'll let Mr. Blythe speak and say maybe what's at...
I'm a bit concerned that the decisions you've made before, I managed to pass on some information, but I don't know if there's a chance to revisit that motion after that, if there's anything new that comes out that maybe is...
Well, it's just a motion, and, you know, by Robert's Rules of Water, you can't have a discussion unless you have a motion that's been seconded on the floor, so...
Okay, so, to address the concerns over noise, we haven't been playing simulators in terms of doing one thing and then doing the other. Sorry, I'm, sorry, I'm just, we have not been making noise with one set of noise simulations and then changing it. We did a, we did a sound test, and we went through the entire program with members of the board in attendance to show them exactly what we were doing. The noise, the noise was evident, using a professional recording device. We've also offered to run noise simulations with members of the community, so they can see what was going on, so that they know exactly where we were running certain parts of the training, where the noise originated from. We've offered that many, many, many times, and it's always been declined. So, I don't think certain individuals who oppose this are even interested in finding a workable solution. One of the things we could do by doing a noise simulation test is actually, if there was a disturbance that they were having with it, is move parts of the training away from them. We've got hundreds and hundreds of feet of forest, so we can move components of the training around. And again, I've offered it, and I offer it yet again, that we can do that with them collaboratively to avoid any noise implications. In terms of the 10-day stretch, I think I can work that into the application or agree here if that helps. The World Bank want to run 42 courses a year. They run for two days, but they're not going to run it every single week. They don't have the numbers, so they really, 12 people typically attending a course may go up to 15, 24 max. And then we want to be able to run one or two courses as well, so we can spread them out, that alleviated any stress. So, there's an offer of this anyway. We did, we spoke to the VDOT. We come in at about 28 to 30% of an average family in terms of traffic on the road over a year, so we're going to have a very minimal impact upon the roads as well. The World Bank bid comes around every five years, so if we don't get permission to do it, we will be waiting for five years. The economic value beyond what we're already contributing to the community now, and it's about, we project up until December, about $850,000 from 2018 October to December this year, where COVID-19 has obviously distorted that, is going to be about $850,000 into the local community. Based on the World Bank numbers, in addition to that, we would be making a financial investment to local businesses, purely local businesses, of $2.5 million, up to $2.5 million into the local economy, and we're committed to putting it into every single business here as a profit, even if they're more expensive, they go to one of our roads. So, we really want to invest into the local community as well. We've got seven written supporting neighbors saying they're happy with us. We've got three more who verbally said they give with us doing this. So, the vast majority of the neighbors are okay. We've offered to invest up to $5,000 into the local road, the Insuri Lake. So, we're insuring our whole ground, and we won't be, but we're willing to pay for all the road neighbors on that leg to help out. Yes, we do invest into, into people on the road. Of course you do, they're our friends now, they're our neighbors. Why wouldn't we? That makes perfect sense. It would be wrong of us not to. We've also invested in businesses outside the Insuri Lake as well, and we do that as a matter of course. And we've also offered $230,000 of in-kind support to the local schools and churches here as well. We're a small women-owned business, and part of our social responsibility program is to try and reinvest in that, into the community. And I don't say that just as a, as a trite comment. We have awards from the Schools Authority of Virginia for investing hundreds of thousands of dollars of proverbal work to safeguard children, and so we're very much invested in that type of approach. We are more than happy to try and be as invisible and as silent as humanly possible. I can attest to the noises that we produce with those weapons. They're half tire planks, we can set up fluffers, we can set up walls to redirect sound and do all that. Noise is the problem, we can fix it, we just need to work with the people who are concerned so we know where the noise is coming from. The other thing I'll say, again, I don't want to throw it back, but the noise that's being generated on the range of the fire break is 163 decibels on the fire break. We're making 58 decibels on the edge of our land. Okay, so the noise that's being generated through the fire break is over three times higher.
When you're talking about the fire break? When you talk about the fire break...
So there's a fire break here, so we have our land this year, we have a fire break, and then we have Tim Joyce's house.
It's a power plant.
Yes, sorry. Fire, yes, sorry.
Okay, okay.
So...
So they have a foot power plant.
On our land.
Yeah, and I apologize.
We own it. The trust has...
Yeah, I understand. My apologies, yes, again. In England, fire breaks are owned by the government. I didn't realize in France they have a market. But, but they're using the noise there, the fire, high-powered rifles, and the caliber they're using is 163 decibels. On the, the edge of the land, we are producing 58 to tops, tops, normally about 54. If you look at the measures, that is a low amount of noise. So there's...
All right, thank you. All right. So is that a motion? The recommendation out, and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion, please? Or is he closing his turn? I don't know. Are you spoken?
No, I, well, I spoke earlier. I, I just thought that we would just move on with that recommendation.
Well...
But you've got a motion on the floor.
Right. All right. Well, I would like to, to speak briefly to it, and I appreciate the arguments and debate and the people who have appeared, but I think that the purpose of the zoning ordinance is to protect the people who live and own property, or own property and live here, and that's the primary function of it. It's to promote a harmonious and attractive community. It's to protect the agriculture zones and preserve them, and also the residential zones. And an application such as this one is for commercial use in one of the resource preservation zones. It is not a use that's permitted by right, and that's the purpose of getting, applying for and getting a special exception permit. When the original permit was applied for, the applicant made what, I was not on the Commission at that time, but, but I have read the record of it in the minutes and so forth. They made what was, in essence, a proffer. And the reason that they made the proffer, as well as I understand, is because there were a lot of objections from the neighbors to the initial proposal. And in order to, I guess, quell that opposition, or ameliorate the concerns, the applicant, not the Planning Commission, not the Board of Supervisors, not the zoning administrator, the applicant agreed to certain conditions to go forward with the application. And they agreed to do that for a period of five years. And those terms and conditions that they themselves proposed to get the approval that they needed was, are reflected in the, in the existing permit that has another three and a half or four years to run. And I have a real concern of the precedent that this was set. And this is not the only example of it happening, where someone comes in, applies for something, and same situation, the neighbors that are concerned about how it's going to affect their quiet enjoyment of their property and their property values and so forth. And, and so conditions are put on it. And then, once they get the so-called camel's nose under the tent, they try to expand the use and deviate from the conditions that everybody agreed to as a condition of either toning down or withdrawing their opposition to the original proposal. And so I just think that is a bad precedent to set. And I'm not sure how I would react, or how I would vote, if this was the original proposal. But that's not the situation, as I see it. The original proposal's, once again, the existing permit. And until the time is up, I'm not inclined to change it. And unless there's some compelling reasons to do it, or there's some compelling change of circumstance, like the neighborhood had a significant change, or, you know, like some other use came in, or all the residential uses went away, or something like that. And there's none of that in this application. As far as the comparisons that folks have made about what some of the other neighbors do on their own property, I don't think that's really relevant, because they're entitled to do that. They don't need a special use permit. You can go out in your backyard of your house and shoot, or off your back porch, or whatever. You're entitled to do that. And by the same, we don't need a zoning permit for that. By the same token, if you're doing it excessively, I guess your neighbors have the right to come in and file a nuisance suit against you to try and stop you doing it. But that's not what we're dealing with here. That's really not relevant to me. I think the main thing is what I already said. So I'm inclined to support Mr. Henry's motion. So Mr. Fraser, do you have any further comment on it?
Yes, sir.
All right. Anything else? All right. Let's vote. Mr. Henry, the motion is to recommend denial of the proposed application. Mr. Henry?
Yea.
Mr. Fraser? What? Mr. Shulman?
I recommend denial.
Okay, so I, all right. That's my vote as well. I. So that's unanimous. Everybody vote to recommend denial of the permit for the Board of Supervisors. And we thank you all for coming to the board here for that, taking your welcome today. You can vote. The zoning administrator, Mr. Glavine, let y'all know that we'll be advertising a public hearing before the Board of Supervisors. And that being brought in August. About the end of August. All right.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to take a five-minute recess. No count of late calls. Okay, everybody sit in the room. Our next order of business is preliminary view of special use permit application number 20-03-01, Robert and Elizabeth Easterly for a family apartment.
Yes, sir.
All right. Ms. Summers, do you want to add? Consider, do you want to summarize the application?
Yes, they own property at 266 Tiger Valley Road in Washington. The property's 10.719 acres in size, its own rural residential. They propose a family apartment for Mrs. Easterday's parents, I'm sorry. The family apartment will be 1,183 square feet in size and located within 151 feet of a dwelling complying with the Code of Detection 17063G. They've also complied with V-Dog requirements, and they have obtained their construction permit from the Health Department for the dwellings subject.
Okay. First question before the Commission is, do you, do you have any questions of the, the Summers or the applicants who are here? Everybody review the application? Okay. The first question is, do you want to entertain a motion to make a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals based on the application of the force, or do you want to accept this for a public hearing?
Can we hear a little bit from the applicant?
Robert Eastgate from Hampton, you have a question?
Just, just go a little bit of a lapse of, you've got an application here, and it seems complete, but this may be a little bit more, it's a garage.
Yes, it is a garage, and then we're going to put apartments above that, the garage to hold my farm equipment. And then the apartment above then would hold my in-laws, who are getting ready to retire, or has retired this month.
So it'd be occupied by two people?
Yeah, it'd be occupied by my wife, mother, and father.
This, this one corner over here where the double X is, in the floor plan, that's not an elevator, is it?
No, there's no elevator, no.
Yeah, I couldn't, this usually, the X could indicate an elevator. And well, you're putting in a new drain field?
No, the drain field, we, when we first put it in, we thought we might do something like this, so we had it done to meet the current sizes that would be able to, that the Health Department approved for this apartment.
So is it, is existing house is two or three bedrooms?
It's a two-bedroom house.
So you got a four-bedroom drain field or a three-bedroom?
Yes.
Four-bedroom. And down the road, you know, 10 years out, 15 years out, 20 years out, what's up to the judge uses as a dwelling?
Dwelling for other family members.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Any other questions?
How big is the tractor lawn?
10.7 acres.
And if the in-laws move out or live somewhere else, or a pathway or something like that, then what's the plan for the use of our land?
Oh, we have different plans.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman is located in the district. I make a motion. We can send it on to the DCA recommendation approval.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Well, I've got a, a comment on this, and that is that the zoning ordinance in section 170-47, I believe it's subsection E, states that the DCA and the Board shall stipulate where appropriate conditions and restrictions in granting special permits to assure the use will be compatible with the neighborhood in which it's located and will meet the standards contained therein. Or where that cannot be accomplished, to deny the use as not in accord with adopted plans and policies as being incompatible with existing uses or development allowed by right in the area. And...
What section are you referring to?
170-47E. And also, section 170-47D requires that any special exception, special uses that are approved, have to comply with other provisions of the article of the, of the zoning ordinance. And we've had some of these, some of these come before the Board of Zoning Appeals in the past. And one of the problems that I see with an application like this is the zoning ordinance provides in section 170-37, a density requirement of one dwelling unit per 25 acres in the agriculture zone. Is this, what zone is this in?
Rural residential.
I think it's a rural residential. Well, and it's 10 acres?
10 acres.
Well, then that, me, it makes that concern, because I was, my question is whether or not it meets the use standards in section 1, the density requirements of 170-37. But if it's one dwelling unit per five acres, then this would be compatible with that. But we've had some that have been 10, 12 acres or 25 acre or less lot, and it would make two dwelling units on the lot. So then, but you don't have that problem if it's rural residential. All right. Any further discussion? All right. Let's vote. So the motion on the floor is to pass this on to the Board of Zoning Appeals with a recommendation of approval. Mr. Henry?
Aye.
And Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Mr. Shulman?
Aye.
All right. Aye as well. So you'll, you'll be notified by the zoning administrator. I think the Board has to be advertised for a public hearing, the Board of Zoning Appeals. So it's, I think, too late to get it on for this month, so we're probably ready at the July meeting, which is the third Wednesday of July. So, all right. But you've got, you have a notice and that. Okay. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right. The next order of business is preliminary view of special use permit number 20-04-01, Sean Harrigan and Virginia Baker for a tourist home. And Mr. Harrigan is here. The Summers, do you want to summarize it and your recommendation? Lieutenant?
Yes, sir. Mr. Harrigan and Miss Baker wish to operate a tourist home in an existing apartment above their garage. This property is a full-time residence. With the apartment having two bedrooms and one bath, the applicants have indicated intent to also continue the use of this apartment for personal guests and family members. The property is located on a private lane that also serves to other properties. The other partner commented that their records indicate the septic system was originally approved in 1983 for two bedrooms, then expanded in 1998 to a total of four bedrooms. Based on their correspondence with the owner, they wish to modify their original proposal, so that the house has two bedrooms, and the garage has two bedrooms for a total of four. And they have no objections to that, to the proposal in their amendment to that permit.
Could I ask a question? Why is there an apartment there already?
We purchased the property in February. The apartment was conveyed when we purchased the property.
Is there any record that there's already been, like, a family apartment approved there, or that happens to be a second dwelling on the lot, as Mr. Conover's pointing out earlier?
We can look into the records.
What?
We can look into the records.
And?
Find out.
Oh, you said you could look into it?
We could.
Oh, you could.
There was no record of a family apartment or approved tourist home on this property prior to this.
So what property there has a kitchen and basement facilities and so forth, or anything?
Correct.
Correct. This is the former green property, right?
Yeah, I believe it's a subdivision of that property.
All right. Does anybody occupy any apartment at this point in time?
No, we've been renovating it. It was pretty dated when we bought the property, so we replaced the flooring and re-insulated it, and renovated the bath and the kitchen area.
If the drain field was increased in size, accommodated two bedrooms in 1998, there should have been some sort of a permit.
Well, I think that's accurate, because the ordinance was in effect, so that's a question of how did it get there? Well, I guess there's a question of how did it get there, but right now, we're not, we're not dealing with that. And I don't know if they have an occupancy permit for it or not, but that's really not the plan. I mean, I guess that's relevant. I mean, do you know, Ms. Lee?
I, I don't remember for sure. I'm sorry. I don't remember for sure.
Well, I think that's something that ought be brought up before the, the term, and I would encourage you to, to figure that out. But, I mean, the, the application that's before us, they, they, I don't think they can get an occupancy permit for it if they don't have a zoning permit. They don't have, they didn't get one then. They, I'm not sure how they, did you get a building permit to do renovations to it, the document, or is it just cosmetics stuff?
No, it's just cosmetics stuff.
So you haven't pulled the building permit to do what I mean, build a new apartment?
No.
Well, I'm looking at that in the building office, because I'm sure you're going to get some questions from the DCA.
This isn't quite the same as the previous application. The previous application, if I can, is a means that the Board of Supervisors is allowed to basically circumvent the density by having provision for family. This is a commercial endeavor that apparently doesn't have, or at least I don't see, and I'm asking for, reason why it's there.
Well, if they get, if the visitor permit is approved, then that would make it legal, even if it's... even if it's not being occupied now, so I'm not sure exactly about that, but, I mean, whatever the pleasure of the commission is, if you're passing on with a recommendation... Right now, a tourist home is supposed to be on 10 acres, and we're going to have two potential dwellings on that 10-acre lot. Am I, am I misspeaking? No, I think that's accurate. So if it's denied, then they wouldn't be entitled to get an occupancy permit, for either a tourist home, they won't apply, they won't do that, but that's not on the table. I mean, I agree with you, that's the issue. What about your pay issue? And that's accurate, right? What about the right-of-way? Is the right-of-way, is there 30-foot right-of-way or 50-foot right-of-way?
It's a 30-foot right-of-way, it's shared with two other properties. The nearest property is a weekend residence, and the other property sits on top of the
Field of Charity. And there's a residence up there? So you're at the bottom of the hill there?
Correct. I discussed the both names.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Advocate? Your D recites a 50-foot right-of-way.
Oh, is it 50? Okay.
But when I look at your plaque, I guess that's a 5, it looks like a 3, but your D does recite a 50-foot right-of-way.
Okay, thank you.
So what, is there a discrepancy?
No, 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 the D says 50 foot, no question, but the darkness of the ink on the plaque... Drop it, drop it down, drag it down, drag it down.
Well, it looks like it says existing 50-foot access.
That looks like a 5 to you?
Okay.
And the D says 52.
Well, it's not the best handwriting.
So the D does say 50.
Well, I think that that would be...
And you do have two zones on the property?
Two what?
Two zones. The application says agriculture compensation zone?
Right.
You have two zones, so you've got two different...
Can you tell where the line is between? Have you gone out there and looked at the slope? So, density in the conservation zone is one per 50, right? Hold on a second. No, one per 25, same as agriculture. All right, well, someone want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we pass it on to the BCA with no motion.
No recommendation?
No recommendation. There's a number of issues here that y'all will be very good at fishing out, like, how did this get, unit become, was it permitted correctly, building permit, everything else, and you all have a lot of fun with it, so we might as well just pass it on to y'all with no recommendations, because you'll dig real deep into it.
Sure, Mr. Macklin, though.
I'm sure the old BCA will, so then no need for us to spend any more time on it. Y'all do the right thing.
Well, thank you, Mr. Henry, for that vote of confidence. Is there a second to Mr. Henry's motion? To pass it to the BCA with no recommendation, one way or another?
I agree with Mr. Henry's line of thinking, and I would like to second that motion.
All right, we have a motion, the debate is ended, any further discussion? All right, let's vote. Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Mr. Shulman?
Aye.
Well, I'm going to abstain, not only because I think we should make a recommendation, but because I have other issues than I, my issues have to do with the definition of tourist home, and I have always abstained at the BCA level, so I'm just going to abstain. So the vote is three to zero with one abstention, to pass it to the BCA with no recommendation. Thank you, sir, and I think this will probably come up at the July meeting, third Wednesday of the month, as usual, and they are, and you'll be getting a notice from, probably from me.
I have a lot of research to do and a lot of questions.
All right, well, I would encourage you to try to answer as many of those as you can, including now on July.
Mr. Chairman, would you maybe help the advocate with some of the areas you might want to study and research? It's a little...
Yeah, I mean, I'm a little frustrated already, because the property was represented as a five-bedroom property, and then...
That's between you and your agents.
Right. Come to find out now that it's like four bedrooms, so we accepted that recommendation, health department, now we're talking about unpermitted structures.
So you need to find out when it was built, permit, and maybe get a copy of the building permit, research.
I think what I would do is, I would start with the Health Department again, and get that exact date of when they issued the, the septic field permit, or they amended to it, whatever it is.
Ms. Summers, the man in 1998, I think he was looking at...
What it sounds like, and so then, then I would go to the building office and see if, I mean, just do a search under who, I think at that time, I'm not positive, but I think Jeff and Jessica Green owned it at that time, and, but I'm not 100% sure, and I'm not pretty sure. I know, the reason I know is because there were clients of mine, not by any of this stuff, but they had some other properties in the county, and I did some legal work for them, and so I believe that that was after 2002, so I know they sold it and moved away, but I think that was later than 1998. And maybe you can contact them, maybe they have some documents.
So, one more thing, you know, some people find out that they're getting assessed for a property for its use, like in your case, a garage apartment, and we hire outside assessors, and they may come into a property and they see this garage apartment, whatever you have as a dwelling, they don't ask any questions, they just put a value on it. So they don't check to see if it was permitted or legal, they just put a value on it, that's job, and then move on, nobody questions them unless the owner does.
Right. So... That's another place I'm going to say, you can't, I don't know what you're going to find in the building office, but another place to go maybe before you go to the building office is go in next door here to the Commissioner of Revenues office, and they have what's called a land card, and that describes what are the improvements on the property, and you can go back to a successive ones and find out when, you know, at what point this apartment actually appeared on the assessment card.
I'm not on the BCA, he is, but I bet you they're going to queue in to see if, they want to see a building permit on that one.
So, again, my, my own view of it is, regardless of whether it was lawfully built or not, that's really an enforcement issue, I think, for the zoning administrator, not for this commissioner, not for the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I would say if they give you a permit, I mean, I know that some of them, this is the Board of Zoning Appeals, because we had a, we had a issue come up down in Castle about two years ago, year and a half ago, I can't remember exactly, where it was a similar thing, there was a, there was one structure that was built, and then another, another dwelling unit was built that was applied for as an agricultural, like a barn or something, but then they changed the upstairs into a dwelling, and they were busily working on it, and then they applied for not a tourist home, but a family apartment, so there was quite a bit of controversy about that at the time, but it was a similar type thing, where what had been built, you know, probably was not lawfully done, but some members, and I think the majority, they got their permit by, I think, a split vote of three to two, to go ahead and have their family apartment, they wanted to change what had been the primary dwelling into, into the family apartment and finish the unfinished dwelling, so, anyway, the more of those questions you can ferret out, the better.
Sort of a related question to that, if you don't use it for special use permit, just a family member live there?
Well, if it's a separate dwelling, I think there's also, is it special, special use or special exception? I think special use to have more than one dwelling on a lot is a special exception. Special exception.
Right, so it's sort of the same process.
So it's the same, whether it's a family apartment or a separate dwelling for members of the same family, if you've got another dwelling unit, which means a kitchen and a bath, you've got a dwelling unit. Look at the definition in the document, it's a dwelling unit, and we're also building codes, so if that's what you've got, you can't...
You wouldn't make the tear deal, would you?
That would be up to the zoning administrator, and I'm not the zoning administrator anymore. So I'm not going to answer a hypothetical question, Mr. Henry. All right, good luck.
Thank you.
If you, if you can, it's really, you know, you always have the option, you know, to defer, pass July, so that, work with Michelle, and keep letting the BCA what you want to do.
I have plenty of vacation time to research the issues.
All right, good luck, Dave.
Thank you.
All right, the next order of business is preliminary view of special use permit number 20-04-01, Jennifer Rochelle for a tourist home, and I see that she...
Thank you, we are welcome.
You are here, thank you for coming. Now, Rochelle, do you want to go ahead and summarize this application, and see if there's any questions?
Yes, sir, thank you. This is a five-bedroom home that is proposed as a tourist home located at 23 Fishhoff Pass Lane in Flint Hill. The property is 30 acres in size, and is own conservation. The applicant has indicated that while she is absent from the area and traveling, that she wishes to be able to rent out the property.
Okay, any questions from the members of the commission, for Ms. Summers, or for the applicant? I think it's a, it's a comprehensive application, it's all clear.
I, um...
Mr. Shulman?
I visited the property recently. It's secluded, I've spoke with two to three neighbors, no complaints, and full support of her endeavor.
Okay. Now, there is an issue about, is this on a right-of-way, or is that road only served your property?
Suzie McNally and I shared that claim. The majority of it is on my property, so she might have an agreement for the right-of-way, and I believe Mr. Shulman has spoken to her, and she is in complete agreement about that.
She doesn't account?
Suzie, yes, they adjourned my dinner. I'm also the first one home.
The first what?
The first house.
She owns the land right of ways along, so...
And I am land...
She who?
She's right over here.
Well, no, you said she, yeah, all right, that's what I thought. All right, so really, you own the road?
Correct.
Hundred percent.
Right, so it's, so the property's not really accessed by a right-of-way, it's accessed by...
Suzie has a right-of-way on my land to get to her, so I have that, but there's two, there are two houses that are accessed from the same land, is that clear?
My only question is, how's the water taste?
The water's fine.
Did you get the results?
I did, it did fill, honestly. Turns out, I asked the analysis, asked her why, evidently there's quite a few that are doing this, and he said, have you done any plumbing lately? And I said, yes, but in fact, we just did some, we're in the process of doing more, and he said, you shouldn't wait until you were doing the plumbing. We'll address that well and have a request.
Okay, so, any other question? Do you want to refer this directly to the BCA or have a public hearing?
I would think it is a separate court. Here, I make a motion that we send it on to the BCA with a recommendation for approval.
All right, is there a second?
I second that.
All right, any further discussion? All right, the motion is to pass this to the Board of Zoning Appeals with a recommendation of approval. Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Fraser? Mr. Shulman?
Aye.
And I abstain. All right, so the basis is three to zero, one abstention, recommendation of approval, I think it will come up at the July meeting, same deal.
I see that.
You'll get a notice? Okay, thank you. All right, that completes all these things, the old business, the text amendment has been withdrawn as we're stating, and owing to the hour and the fact that some of our commissioners are not here, I don't know if they're still listening or not. Did you see the email from Mr. Ronnie? What email? He sent us an email that for some reason he was muted, and he had no electronic ability to flag that he wanted to speak. What was that? It came in about eight...
I responded to him, let him know you need to press star nine, since he's on the phone.
Seven fifty eight. I don't have a computer. All right, I don't think that we should get into the comprehensive plan business, even though it's not, I guess we could, but, so, our next question is scheduling a work session, which we, our next work session, which we deferred the last work session, so we could do that, if we do it next week, Wednesday, the BCA meeting, we thought we might have a conflict with that meeting, I understand it's been canceled, so we could do it Wednesday evening, or Wednesday afternoon, whatever suits, or some other day. That works for me, you know, but the rest, good than that? Want to do it in the afternoon, or you want to do it in the evening?
Evening.
All right, seven o'clock? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to recess this meeting until seven o'clock next Wednesday, which I believe is 24, is that right?
So, Mr. Chairman?
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of recessing until next Wednesday, July 24, at 7:00 PM, at the same place? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the meeting is recessed.